Good evening, Milpitas. Here we are. Welcome, everybody who's streaming live on youtube.com or Facebook Live. You're tuning in actually to the special meeting of the Milpitas City Council here on Tuesday, October the 12th, 2021. We'll go ahead and get this meeting going here. I'll go ahead and call this meeting in order. And we'll go to our city clerk, Wendy Wood, for the roll call.
Councilmember Chua. Councilmember Chua is here. Councilmember Dominguez. Councilmember Dominguez is here. Councilmember Fan.
Present.
Vice Mayor Montana. Vice Mayor Montana is here. Mayor Tran.
Here. Thank you very much, Wendy. It's gonna be a great night. Next up here is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Again, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
And next up's the public forum. Alrighty, it's gonna be one minute tonight for comments. Looking in the chamber, I see no one in the chamber for the public comment. I will go to the virtual chamber. I want to thank all our attendees for joining us tonight. I do see a list of your names on the Zoom platform. For anybody tuning at home, you can join us via Zoom and provide public comment. The link to the Zoom is on the City of Milpitas website on tonight's agenda, which is in a PDF format. And typically, our links are in blue font. I see no virtual raised hands for the public forum. We'll go ahead and move on now to announcements. And we'll go to our city manager, Steve McHarris.
Good evening, Mayor Tran, members of the council. I have no announcements for the special meeting.
Thank you very much, Steve. And we'll go to the deus on my right. I have no announcements. It's gonna be a great, efficient meeting for all tonight. A shout out to all the panelists on Zoom. You know who you are. All right, I'll go here to Councilmember Chua.
Thank you, Mayor Tran. I just want to remind everybody that there is a park cleanup this Saturday, October 16. Yes, at Ben Rogers Park. Please come. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Chua. And thank you much more for the reminder for our community members who would like to participate in beautifying Milpitas. Next up, we have the Vice Mayor, Carmen Montana.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just wanted to say that it was a really nice pending ceremony for our new chief. Congratulations, chief. And I know you would do a fantastic job. So congratulations. And the other announcement is that I have is this last Saturday, attended the 110th Taiwanese Cultural Festival that was held on heading at the government center. It was really successful and was really nice. And we represented the City of Milpitas. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Looking for any further announcements? I'll take a look at the deus and the deus in the cloud. Any virtual raised hands or requests? I see no further requests for any announcements. Next up's the announcement of conflict of interest and campaign contributions. We have a guest city attorney this evening, Martin Day, Los Angeles. Hey, Martin, how you doing?
Hi, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Thank you. So I'll just be asking one question because we don't have any contracts or development project applicants on the agenda tonight. So I will just ask the conflict question and not the campaign contribution question. I will ask the mayor and each council member whether he or she has any financial or personal conflict of interest related to any of the items on tonight's agenda. I'll start with Councilmember Chua.
None.
Councilmember Dominguez.
None.
Councilmember Fan.
None.
Vice Mayor Montano.
None.
And Mayor Tran.
And myself as a none.
Let the record reflect none to that question. And I'm happy to read the council code of conduct if you'd like, Mayor.
Please.
So Milpitas City Council Code of Conduct. Be respectful and courteous. Words, tone, and body language. Model civility. Avoid surprises. Praise publicly and criticize privately. Focus on the issue, not the person. Refrain from using electronic devices while on the council days. Disclose conflicts of interest and affiliations related to agenda items. Separate governing from campaigning. The council speaks with one voice after making policy on issues. Respect the line between policy and administration. The council will hold one another accountable to comply with this code of conduct. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Martin. Happy you're here. All right, moving on to the approval agenda. I'll move to approve the agenda. Looking for a second. Need a second, second. We have a second from Councilmember Dominguez. All to approve the agenda. Go to the vote. Councilmember Chua.
Aye.
Councilmember Dominguez.
Aye.
Councilmember Fan.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Montana.
Aye.
Myself and I, the agenda is approved. All right, let's get into it. Shout out to all our department directors. You know, really, every meeting is an opportunity for each department director to shine. Always connect with Steve about this. And we're just so proud to have everybody on our all-star team. And so we got a couple items tonight. First up, fiscal benefits of employment land study. And let's go to our Director of Economic Development, Alex Andrade.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. My name is Alex Andrade with the Office of Economic Development. We're very pleased to be before you tonight to discuss the fiscal benefits of employment land study. And if we can have that PowerPoint up on the screen, that would be great. I'll just say that this is a very important body of work for the city as it'll help really create the environment for a premier innovation district, not just in Milpitas, but in all of Silicon Valley. And it's gonna be really important because it'll be located around the transit center and it's part of the metro specific plan, which you're gonna hear about next. And also, I want to mention that if the market conditions are right and the city council explores specific policy actions that we're gonna discuss today, then the economic development team will be poised and ready to begin very aggressive business attraction efforts. And we need to make sure that we see this conversation as very much a competition. So we need to find a way to differentiate Milpitas to gain a competitive advantage. And results will be a plenty in that we will attract new businesses with emerging technologies, will create good quality jobs, and will diversify the economy and grow the economy, which is something we very much need here at the city. Again, we're gonna discuss some policy actions in a little bit. If we're able to move forward with those types of discussions when investors and businesses are ready to have those conversations, then right now, we're setting the foundation to ensure that investors take those vital steps toward seeing the innovation district in that general area around the metro as a place to invest. I'll start by saying that at the last study session in this respect was June 14th, the Milpitas Metro Specific Plan Study Session, the city council reached consensus on providing the right land uses and implementation tools to protect employment lands and also to incentivize commercial development within the innovation district. Before we get going, there's two important policy documents the city council has approved. I'll start with the General Plan 2040. It indicates that and recommends that we explore the development of an innovation district to ensure that we increase employment densities around the transit center. And last May, you approved the Economic Development Strategy. And Strategy 27 in particular recommends identifying and preserving office and research and development real estate opportunities also around the transit center. So here we go. Next slide, please. So today's presentation outline is on the screen. We are gonna be joined by a couple of other speakers. Our lead in this effort is Daniel DeGoo, Senior. He is our Economic Development Coordinator. We're also joined by Typhian Rice Evans, who is a principal at Economic Planning Systems. They are EPS and are the consultant. So we're gonna discuss the importance of the fiscal benefits of employment lands. You'll get a good sense of what the study's all about through background and summary of findings. This is a two-phased approach, and we're here to discuss Phase One. It's very heavy and data-driven. And you have already seen the technical analysis from EPS. So we're gonna focus on various analyses today that are fiscal impact analysis, occupation and wage analysis, the innovation district development scenario analysis, and a residual land value analysis. We're currently in Phase Two right now. We look forward to coming back and giving you a better idea of the innovation district framework with case studies and other information. We will then close the conversation with next steps and recommendations, and then we'll have a conversation with you. So next slide, please. So this slide is not new to you. You've seen this because it's part of the innovation, or rather, the economic development strategy. And you've seen this because I've presented on this. But this is one of the main reasons why we're having this conversation today. What's on the screen is a historical view of commercial inventory in Milpitas. Going back from the 1980s, if you look down at the bottom of the screen, you have various decades going through all the way to the year 2018. On the left-hand side, you have square feet. And this is a line graph with various types of real estate land uses and development. In green is research and development. Blue, that represents office. In lavender, that's manufacturing. And in purple, it's warehouse distribution. I've said this before, in the 1980s and the 1990s, Milpitas was a boomtown. They were bringing in jobs, businesses. You can see the development that was happening here in the 1980s and 1990s. However, during this current century, around the 2000, 2001 year, we began to flatline. And what we're attempting to do today is to create a new environment, one that's poised for investment from businesses and investors and real estate developers that again are gonna bring in new jobs and create an opportunity for the city to be fiscally healthy for a long time. The average age of our commercial buildings are 30 years old. If you're a business owner and you want to come to Milpitas, you generally are not gonna want to go into a Class B, Class C type of product. You want to get the best possible product that's out there with quality materials, and that's Class A. So this is very important for us to take a look at developing the innovation district around the transit center. Next slide, please. This is also a slide that you've seen before, but it's very important to share. We've added the third column, which is the average annual wages, just to kind of give you a sense of where we are. This comes from our economic development strategy, and it's a list of the top 10 jobs in Milpitas by the number of jobs. And you see that six out of the top 10 jobs are service sector jobs. And I want to state that all jobs in Milpitas are very important to us. However, you see that we have high-wage jobs versus low-wage jobs here. What we are intending to do is create an environment through new real estate investment and new businesses that allow for the creation of good quality jobs. Next week, we're gonna come to you to talk about workforce development. So we'll make this connection once again. But we just wanna share these two slides with you because they're very poignant and complement the conversation that we're gonna have shortly. Next slide, please. At this point, I am going to hand it over to Daniel DeGoo, Senior. He's gonna talk to you about the innovation district. And then afterwards, he will hand it over to Typhian to give you all of the really great data that we've been able to learn. So Daniel, please take it away. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. And good evening, Honorable Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, and distinguished city council members. For the record, Daniel DeGoo, Economic Development Coordinator. Okay, so the Milpitas Innovation District as part of the Milpitas Metro Specific Plan is a 74.4 acre area located on the southern portion of the city near and around the Milpitas Transit Center and Great Mall. If you look at the left side of your screen, under the lavender color area, that's the actual innovation district. The innovation district will be designed as an employment destination with modern office, R&amp;D buildings, and flexible space for people to interact through creative collisions and place making. The build-out of the innovation district aims to bring quality jobs around transit and near people's home. Next slide, please. So the benefits of the Milpitas Innovation District include the following. Strengthening the city's long-term fiscal sustainability, which in turn supports essential and critical city services. Growing the Milpitas economy through innovation and entrepreneurship. Accelerating business attraction and retention opportunities in Milpitas. Catalyzing up employment creation and upscaling opportunities for Milpitas residents. Creating a sense of place for the Milpitas Metro District. And last, enhancing connectivity throughout Silicon Valley and the Greater Bay Area to and from the Milpitas Transit Center. Next slide, please. This next slide talks to the principle of development. There are seven. I won't read every principle word for word, but it really involves around protecting, preserving our employment land, promoting densification and intensification throughout the innovation district and metro area. It's looking at seeing mixed-use opportunities with commercial as the primary. Providing incentives to encourage development. You'll learn a lot about this during Typhian's presentation. We're also looking at encouraging parcel assembly as that brings the highest and best use to development. Also promoting pedestrian-oriented streets and then exploring infrastructure as a way of technology. Next slide, please. Thank you. So why are we studying our employment lands? Our employment lands are incredibly important to municipal governments. These lands provide significant contribution to the city's general fund, which in turn helped the city provide critical and central services to the community. Our employment lands are also home to thousands of jobs, and only 28% of these of our land is dedicated to employment land. So it's very, very important that we protect our employment land for jobs of the future. Next slide, please. So as Alex mentioned, this is a two-phase project as it relates to the scope of work. The first phase has been completed, and we are currently working on Phase Two. The first phase was really focused on technical work, and we looked at four different analyses that would help us better understand the Milpitas economy as it relates to development and various aspects of development. The first is a fiscal impact analysis, which is really looking at impacts to the city's general fund through various land uses and development. The second study is really focused on occupational wage analysis. So looking at our wages and jobs and seeing how that relates to the current built environment and also with a future build-out of the innovation district. And then we looked at various models and scenarios of the innovation district and seeing through different build-outs, what kind of impact would that have to jobs, to development, and also to wages. And then we ran a residual land value analysis, which looks at things from a developer's perspective to see if developers to build, what things should we be looking at and what lever should we be addressing to make development feasible? And then Phase Two is our Innovation District Framework Plan. And this is really a place where we'll be developing a set of policies and actions to support the innovation district implementation. And we'll be taking all your feedback today to help us with this process of Phase Two. Next slide, please. So this is a summary of findings. I'll go through it very quickly as you'll learn a lot in the upcoming slides. But really, we took five key takeaways from Phase One. Number one, our city's current employment lands make substantial and positive contribution to the city's budget. Number two, on average, all new development types in the city are expected to provide positive contribution to the city's budget. Number three, occupational wages in Milpitas tend to not be as strong as Mountain View, Sunnyvale, and Santa Clara today. But with a full build-out of the innovation district will make us extremely competitive with our neighboring cities. Number four, the successful development of an innovation district will bring a broad range of substantial benefits. And number five, city actions can help spur the evolution and development of the innovation district. And with that, I would like to transition over to Typhian, our consultant from EPS, who will go over the findings for each of the different technical work. Typhian?
Thank you, Daniel. Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. Pleased to be here. The first technical piece of work we conducted, I'm gonna talk about, is the fiscal impact analysis. If I can have the next slide, please. A fiscal impact analysis, as Daniel mentioned earlier, evaluates existing and future land uses and asks the question of what impact do they have on the city's general fund budget? As shown in the schematic we have up on the screen, the, whether it's existing or new land uses or developments, they bring with them a range of residents and workers that have a variety of different impacts on our general fund. On the plus side, we have our general fund revenues, property taxes, sales and use taxes, other kinds of fees that go into the general fund. On the expenditure side, these residents and workers require a range of services, a range of general government services that we need to provide that require expenditures out of the general fund. So we look at those two together for each land use and compare them. And in cases where the revenues are greater than costs, we say there's gonna be a fiscal surplus. And when they're less, we say there's gonna be a fiscal deficit. It gives us a nice way of understanding the ways in which different land uses will affect the city's finances and general fund. Next slide, please. So here are some outcomes from the first part of the fiscal analysis we did, which was a focus on existing land uses. You'll see an array of land uses across the top, residential and commercial that we evaluated, partly driven by the information we had from the city's 2020, 2020, 2021 adopted budget and financial plan. At the upper part of the table, you'll see our estimates of general fund revenues for each land use. Below it, you'll see the general fund expenditures. And at the bottom, you'll see the net, the net positive or negative impact from each of these land uses. And the thing we really wanted to draw to your attention from this particular slide was the numbers in green, where we show that industrial, retail, and hotel uses in particular, these are the existing uses, provide a strong fiscal surplus and help support the provision of public services to other land uses as well. Next slide, please. We also looked forward and we said, what kinds of development might occur here in the city going forward in the innovation district, but also elsewhere? And so we looked at a couple of higher-density residential uses along with a range of commercial uses, Class A office and office R&amp;D that we might want to see on the innovation district, along with an array of other commercial uses. And again, we looked at this for kind of an individual project level and asked the same kind of question. What are the general fund revenues we might see? What are the general fund expenditures? What you can see at the bottom there is that all of these land uses show from modest to quite substantial fiscal positives or surpluses. We did want to draw your attention in particular to the Class A office and office R&amp;D surpluses, which are on the larger side. And you know, I think particularly important relative to some of the uses, particularly important in the light of the innovation district discussion we're kind of engaged in here today. Let's see. Next slide, please. Okay, so shifting to our second part of our analysis, this was the occupation and wage analysis. Next slide, please. So the occupational wage analysis estimated the expected number of jobs and the associated wages associated with different kinds of land uses. So here we wanted to understand potential job accommodation and generation as well as wages as different kinds of development occurred in the city. Next slide, please. The methodology we used was to basically build around U.S. Census Bureau data. That data provided us with information on wages by industry sector in different cities. And so we focused on four cities, Milpitas and three others, to pull that information and to understand the jobs by industry sector. We then needed to tie those industry sectors to different kinds of land uses and developments because ultimately, we wanted to understand what the average wages were coming out of different land uses. So we made that, made those connections, and then ultimately calculated, you know, kind of the average wage of a set of workers in different kinds of buildings. Next slide, please. So as you can, here's the results of our analysis. And you can see that we've looked at the four cities of Milpitas, Santa Clara, Sunnyvale, and Mountain View. And a few things we wanted to highlight here. First of all, you know, the Class A office, Class A office R&amp;D. Those buildings and the businesses that come with them and the jobs tend to command the highest, the highest wages. We obviously have a broad range of other uses and other important jobs that have a variety of differential wages. We did notice, as Daniel noted earlier, there are some categories for which Milpitas is a little bit lower than some of the other cities. We also do note in the current kind of set of distribution of jobs relative to these other cities, Milpitas is a bit lighter on the Class A office, office R&amp;D side. And so that's another reason why we think attracting those uses to the innovation district could be a strong driving economic force. Next slide, please. So part three of our analysis was, we termed it the Innovation District Development Scenarios Analysis. Next slide, please. And here, what we really wanted to do was to understand, recognizing there were different futures for the innovation district area in the city. We wanted to consider the different kinds of impacts that might occur under different potential futures. Next slide, please. So our methodology really was, it was a couple of steps. The first step was to define, work with the Office of Economic Development, city staff, to define four different innovation district scenarios in terms of what kinds of buildings and land uses could occur there. We created a range so we could see the differential effects. We then applied the analyses we just showed you earlier, the fiscal impact analysis and the occupational wage analysis to the specifics of those development scenarios. And ultimately, we're able to calculate aggregated potential impacts for each of the scenarios, which we'll show you here in a second. Next slide, please. This, this table gives you a little synopsis of the high-level kind of differentiation of the four scenarios we looked at. The first scenario was really a look at kind of current uses and current land use designations, so not much in the way of change. The second scenario we chose to focus on, continue to have a substantial amount of warehouse, like the current circumstances, but introduce a larger amount of commercial retail development. Scenario, in scenario three, you really start to see more of those Class A office, office, and office R&amp;D uses. But we still complement them with a broad range of additional industrial uses. And finally, class, sorry, scenario four, which is really somewhat similar to some of the modern innovation districts we see elsewhere around the U.S. This one is very focused, almost predominantly focused on the Class A office, office R&amp;D uses. Next slide, please. So and here are the outcomes of bringing, you know, those pieces together with our prior analyses. And what you can see is the, you know, the uses and the outcomes for each of these scenarios could be quite disparate depending on the direction we take. So you can see in that first column, for example, that we might accommodate between 1.6 million to 3.9 million square feet of development. Perhaps, you know, as importantly or more importantly, the level of jobs that we could accommodate range from 2,000 to 14,000, depending on the kinds of buildings we build and the employment densities within them. The wages in association with those jobs really vary quite substantially, ranging from 140 million to up to about 1.9 billion under scenario four. And finally, the fiscal impacts, they all have robust fiscal impacts. But you can also see that as we go, as we start moving into the uses signify by scenario three and scenario four, we again see the fiscal impacts increasing in the same way that the economic impacts do. So that is one set of findings from us. And I, we do have a couple more technical sections to go through. But Alex suggested it, but it might be a good idea to just take a moment here and see if the council had any clarifying questions on what was just provided or whether I should just continue on to the next piece.
Looking for any requests by the council. I have no requests. Looking to the Zoom, pardon. Looking to the Zoom platform. I don't see any virtual raised hands. Looking to the deus. We'll carry on if there's any later. Thank you very much. Carry on.
Thank you. Next slide, please. Thank you, Matt. So the fourth and final piece of our analysis was the residual land value analysis. Next slide, please. Thank you. A residual land value analysis, which is a form of development feasibility analysis, looks at for each land use, looks at development revenues, development costs, and asks the question whether the project will pencil out. In other words, whether a developer, we would expect developers to be interested in building this kind of land use in Milpitas. Next slide, please. Sharing some slides, we might have shared at a prior meeting as well, but they're providing a little more detail on the development feasibility concept. Here you can see that the process for a developer and their decisions is based on an assessment of costs. So they will is based on an assessment of costs that they will look at and you know, some costs associated with land, with construction, hard costs with their soft costs, with their city permits and fees, look at the aggregate cost and then ask themselves the question, can I drive enough revenues from, from leases primarily to both, you know, cover my costs? Am I going to be able to repay my lenders and my investors? And I, and am I going to be able to make a basic level of return for myself? And that's the, the kind of the heart of the development feasible feasibility model and the residual land value model, which we ran for a variety of land uses here in Milpitas. Next slide, please. Just a little bit more contextually here, you can see in a kind of schematic format, the same set of costs laid out, you can see roughly how they relate. But here we also wanted to point out that there are a number of factors that go into making a development project pencil. Many of them are outside of the control of the city. Market, market conditions, certain kinds of construction costs are outside of our control. There are however, some things that are under our control is, or under your control as city policymakers. You know, one of which of course is development impact fees, which is part of the, the cost equation. There are other policy and regulatory tools that can be used that can both limit and expand revenues, including, you know, flexibility around land uses, setbacks and height limits, requirements for ground floor retail and parking requirements also, which are, you know, sometimes in some cases, minimum parking requirements push up the costs that developers would invest in parking and that can become quite a substantial part of the construction costs we see. So that's the, that's, that's a kind of a little bit more breakdown on the cost front and we recognize that fees are very important part of, of the kind of the infrastructure financing collection. But in some cases, we also acknowledge that they do have an effect on development feasibility and are worth looking at a little bit more closely. Next slide, please. So the results. So we ran analyses on all for all these different land uses you see in the different boxes here. And what we found, which is probably not surprising based on what we see going on on the ground, you know, both today, but also, you know, recently and certainly pre-COVID, is that the land uses with the, the positive residual land value, the light industrial, the warehouse and distribution, the townhomes and mid-rise residential, they're all supported by development economics and work pretty well. What we also found under today's conditions, we want to emphasize that under today's conditions, Class A office, Class A office R and D and high-rise residential are not supported under today's conditions, but may be possible under a scenario where we can protect lands for them and where we see market improvements and we can pull certain policy levers. And to test that out, we did a little bit more technical work that we show in the next slide. So in this slide, what we are, what we were seeking to do was to say, look, we know we have a variety of prototypes that are not currently viable. We have our Class A office, the five and eight story. We have our Class A office R and D. We have our high-rise residential. We asked ourselves the question, you know, what if we, what if there's a situation where through, you know, continuing dynamism in Silicon Valley, new investment, you know, kind of a variety of new investments in the Innovation District and around, we're able to do two things. One, achieve stronger lease rates, improving the, the, the values and the revenues. And two, if we, and, and the two we took a look, well, what if we could combine that with reductions in parking ratios, but also reductions in the TATAF fee specifically on the Class A office, office R and D uses. And what you'll see here is that under the baseline, the baseline was the kind of today's conditions, you'll see that the residual land value, which is the difference between the value and the cost in all cases was red. With some, with some improvement in the market and some adjustments over policy levels, you see, we do turn those to green. In other words, they do generate a positive residual land value and there is some, maybe some opportunity for certain developers to make those projects work. So we wanted to highlight that as a, a potential perhaps helpful to discussion of policy levers and submit to discussion of the future. Next slide, please. And so that is the, thank you for, for bearing with me through all that data and technical work. That's the body of work we've been doing, working carefully with Alex and Daniel over the last few months. Just to want to speak to my last slide, just want to speak to you very briefly about phase two, the Innovation District Framework Plan. And all that to say that phase two is currently in progress and what we're ultimately building towards is this innovation district framework plan where and Alex and Daniel can speak more to this, but I believe the idea is to come forward with some policy suggestions and other ideas and ways we can really help kickstart or further kickstart the Innovation District. What we're doing here is basically taking the phase one work we've done, taking, you know, kind of a more detailed look at what's on the ground in the, in the Innovation District today, combining it with case studies of a number of different existing innovation, well, existing and emerging innovation districts in different places that grappled with evolution in different ways and trying to bring the best practices to bear, combining it with what we know about Milpitas to help set up a set of potential policies and actions that we'll be bringing back to you when that's completed. And with that, I believe it's back over to you, Alex.
Thank you, Typhion. Next slide, please. So before we get to the next steps, I'm sorry, I thought the next steps was, was coming up, but if you think about that slide with the historical view of growth, you see, we were doing quite well under the 1980s and in the 1990s, and then we essentially flatlined. What we're really trying to do here is go from flatline to a lifeline and then an upward trajectory. How do we get there? You just heard Typhion explain how the city has control of some things, but not control of other things. And that's what developers will look at. So it's really important for us to have a conversation as it relates to potential policy options. And this isn't a, a full list. There are likely others that you may have and want to discuss to which we're obviously very interested. You've heard us talk about protecting and preserving employment lands through land use designations, offering flexibility and density and height. You've noticed that we've looked at five stories and eight stories as it relates to office Class A, Class A or office and R and D. We would like to have a conversation about potentially reducing parking requirements. We are talking about a transit oriented area. It is common for cities to take a look at reduced parking around areas like that. We're attempting to put jobs near, near people and people near jobs. We would like to have a, a conversation about reducing development impact fees on future office and R and D projects. We really are trying to attract an anchor tenant and continue to move forward with business traction and, and perhaps even business retention efforts. So we could look at local tech and advanced manufacturing businesses in Milpitas and see if they are ready for expansion. We would also have conversations and we do oftentimes work with our partners in planning, building and fire to expedite entitlements and permit processes. We can have conversations about development agreements and we very much partner with our city team on facilitating pre-development meetings. Those are very helpful. And then through capital improvements, we are already investing in public infrastructure that benefits the overall community. Our, our business partners would be looking for such things as fiber, Wi-Fi ready and things of the like that are of smart city types. So these are the types of conversations that we're going to have in just a little bit. We have some questions for you. So we'll go to the next slide. So here's the next step slide. So we were in front of the Economic Development and Trade Commission in March of this year. That conversation was really more about the scope of work and the Economic Development and Trade Commission helped us formulate the scope of work between June and October. Typhion and his team at EPS have been doing quite a bit of work under phase one and the technical analysis. You have that report. And currently we're in the phase two of the Innovation District Framework Plan. As I mentioned before, we'd like to come back and give you another update. Might be a few months from now. And then just yesterday, we presented the fiscal benefits of employment lands in front of our Economic Development and Trade Commission. It was very, very well received. They are generally interested in learning more about innovation districts. We talked about potentially having a field trip to one of the Bay Area innovation areas, districts, such as going to Mission Bay in San Francisco in the near future. And then of course, we're here in front of you today. And so we'll go to the next slide. So these are potential discussion questions for you. Number one is, does the city council agree with the vision and direction of the Innovation District? Number two, does the city council agree with the seven principles of development for the Innovation District? Or are there other principles that should be considered? Question three, does the city council agree with the proposed policy actions? Or are there other policy actions that the city council may want to explore? And number four, does the city council have any feedback on the phase one technical report? And any of the summary of findings? With that, that concludes our presentation. We're more than happy to take questions and have a conversation with you. And this, this is actually a good conversation because after this, you'll be talking about the Milpitas Metro Specific Plan. So our recommendation in front of you is to receive and accept a report for the fiscal benefits of employment land study and provide direction to staff on development of an innovation district as part of the Milpitas Metro Specific Plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Alex and Typhion and Daniel. Thank you so much. I, I am glad this will be coming back to us in the future for more direction and I'll just give some direction tonight as we go down the dais here one at a time. I'm really excited about the innovation zone as we all know, but many don't speak about the Transit Area Specific Plan did decimate huge numbers of our business square footage historically here in Milpitas. So anytime we can add square feet, whether it's commercial or industrial, I see a lot of commercial tonight. I'm very happy to do that, increasing the density, reducing the parking requirement because it is right next to the BART station. Couldn't ask for better. And really bringing in and attracting new businesses with high paying jobs into Milpitas. Any type of future commercial a high density there will only bring in high paying jobs, but also low paying jobs as well. Service jobs which complement those businesses. You know, I think about the developer fees, that's another thing we had presented. And it depends what type of partner we're bringing into Milpitas here. If it's a Google that's going to come in and purchase all those parcels and, and really drive the development there. I'm not sure if Google needs any type of financial aid with some of the fees and impact fees and such. So it, it all really depends. I do think there is huge demand for a technology company or developer to come into Milpitas there. Huge demand considering the BART station. The most beautiful station in the whole system. We don't have to go too far. We don't have to go too far. Just take the BART south, one stop to San Jose and we see the development planning that's happening just at the next station. So the indicators are there. And I really appreciate the principles tonight. Tonight is not the final night for this item, so I'll keep my remarks there and answer any questions that there may be. Okay. If we don't, if, if you don't mind, I'd like to go down the dais. If folks, I, I do believe everybody wants to provide input. I hope folks are ready. Maybe I will go with the requests. That way folks need a little more time to gather their thoughts. Councilor Chua, did you have a request? Yes, yes.
Thank you, Mayor Tran. Thank you all for the presentation. I have a few questions. And I'll start with, let's go back to the basics. So, so our, our residents understand what we're talking about in terms of Innovation District. I would like to bring up the, kindly bring up the, the map, please.
I think that might be slide, there it is, right there.
Do you have the one with the acreage?
We should have a backup slide with the acreage. Yes, Councilmember Chua.
I, I would like to see that one, please.
Yes, give us a moment and we will get to it. There it is.
There it is.
Yes.
So when we're talking about, correct me if I'm wrong. When we're talking about Innovation District, it's really this, this like, like Daniel said, is the 74.4 acres of land and we're talking about this right here in Montague. The 4.5, the 5.38, seven acres, 4.2, when one acre, and I added this up and it came down to to 73 point and, and yes, it's 73.4 something, something to that effect. So what we're talking about, if we go back to, this is the area that we're talking about. This is the Innovation District. And my, if we go back to tables six, please.
So table six, Typhion, do you remember, or Daniel, remember the I don't think that's, are we wanting to go to the actual tables or in the presentation?
If you don't have that, just go ahead and go to table seven.
Okay. So now these are backup slides. But this looks very similar to the one in the presentation. I think the only difference is if you look at the residual land value and the per acre land value, the, the improved like right here under the Class A office, those are being green. The 7 million, the 1.4 million.
Seven will make it more, the seven that you gave us will make it clearer to everybody what we're talking about. Is this kind of summarizes it? It doesn't really. Do you have it?
This would, yes, council member, this slide is actually.
This is a summary. The detail one is the, the table seven that you handed to us.
Yeah. So it should be around 30, 31 or 32 for staff that's controlling the PowerPoint.
Because we need to understand this.
It's that one. Yes.
Then we have to go to table six in order to understand table seven. But anyway, go ahead. Alex, explain this so everybody understands what we're trying to say.
Sure, I can start and then I'll hand it over to Typhion since he's our consultant. But what this illustrates is that when we looked at the various different types of prototypes, there were some real estate and land uses that came out positive. And then there were some that did not and basically were not feasible. There was a sensitivity analysis that was conducted for Class A office, five story, Class A office, eight story, Class A office and real estate, or rather research and development, and then high-rise residential. These four, if you look at the baseline on the left-hand side and scroll all the way to the right, you'll see the residual land value in red. Those do not pencil out for developers at this time. However, if we are to explore various policy levers that were discussed earlier and we talked about the various costs between the developer and what the city or how the city can help under the improved. If you look to the right under Class A office and five story, we see an improvement of $7 million, which is basically letting the development community decide to move forward with investment and proceed with development. I will hand it over to Typhion to
I think that's good. So what we're saying here, I'm going to summarize my layman's term. So correct me if I'm wrong, anybody. So what we're saying here is this is right now currently on Class A office, five story, eight story and R and D. We are to make it attractive based on your recommendations on the different policies that the council can adopt. Then we were, we're going to turn around and make the negative a positive. Is that the bottom line?
Councilmember Chua, that's exactly right.
And the recommendations that you are presenting to us tonight is just the direction is not really final. Is protect and preserve employment lands. Offer flexibility and density and height. Consider reduce consider reduced parking requirements, consider reduced development impact fees, expedite entitlement and permit processes through development agreements. Those are basically what you're looking at for the council to consider in order to make this negative amounts to positive revenue for the city. Correct?
Councilmember Chua, that is correct. There are various tools in the toolbox in economic development and those are just some tools that we can utilize and explore.
I have a question. On the, have, did you, I guess this is the consultant. Did you consider, just basically, the bottom line here is a lot of offices. Did you consider or even included the hybrid work environment that we're in? How did you apply that to this?
By hybrid, you, you mean, um, council, uh, as a woman?
In person and have, and have Zoom.
Yeah.
Because he deserve, uh, the way I look at this in terms of office spaces, we're looking at physical, one hundred percent physical. Did you include the hybrid working environment that we have now? Or even consider it when you did this calculation?
What, the way in which it is considered is that the, um, as, as you may knows, in certain places, not everywhere, um, the demand for physical office space is, is down. Um, and the lease races are down, and lease rates are down because a lot of folks are not going back to work as of now. Um, so the baseline does reflect, um, some level of, um, you know, reduced interest in Class A office at the current time. So that's, that's how it shows up in these numbers. We recognize there may be a lot of people who, who continue to work from home. We haven't, you know, modeled that as a land use. And more broadly, we do recognize that within an Innovation District, there may be opportunities to do, um, you know, shared working spaces and other, um, collaborative spaces that we're seeing more of. We were seeing them before COVID, but we're seeing more of them now. Um, so those are possibilities. But that was the, the extent to which we, we, we understood, we understood the trend. We understand that market reality and we understand that it might mean that for office clusters everywhere, uh, the evolution might be slowed down a little bit until we figure out exactly how work is gonna look afterwards.
So did you, I, I didn't, I didn't get that clearly. Did you include it there or didn't you?
I can, I can, I can add information here. When we were discussing our scope of work, we did discuss it internally because obviously it's, it's happening. However, we're also looking at a Milpitas Metro Specific Plan at a twenty-year horizon. And we're getting more and more reports that in 2022, there will be more people going back into the office. We will have to consider the hybrid, um, environment because it, it may be with us for, for some time. So we'll have to remain flexible in that regard.
So the answer is no. I take it?
We talked about it internally, but it did not make it to the scope of work because of that twenty-year horizon.
Okay. Let me look at, uh, I think it's good to look at table eight. It's page twenty-three. Okay, um, it's not exactly the table that I'm looking at, but it will do. So go ahead and explain this a little bit, uh, Alex, I think that would help everybody.
Yes, so what you're looking at here, and I will certainly ask Ty Phion and, and Daniel to, to help here. But we're looking at employment lands and non-employment lands by the different types of, uh, product types. Class A office, Class A office R and D, Class B office, industrial, warehouse distribution, hotel, commercial, retail, as well as non-employment lands. Um, we're looking at the various scenarios and we have four scenarios that, uh, represent specific build-out. And so scenario one, as you see on the left-hand side of the screen, is basically telling us what today's environment is. And so what you see today is thirteen percent of our product out there is Class B office, with twelve percent being industrial and the majority of the old entire real estate product that's out there is forty-three percent is warehouse and distribution. Um, so then you see the different scenarios. Scenario two, being more retail and warehouse oriented. Scenario three, where we're getting to add and introduce office research and development, still some industrial, uh, but you, you can notice under Class A office, Class A office R and D, under those two columns, that scenarios three and four, the percentages begin to increase because we're, we're looking at more of an office research and development environment. Uh, and then you start seeing the decreasing of warehouse and distribution, uh, and commercial retail. But, you know, you, it depends on the scenario. You see industrial under scenario three, where industrial represents thirty-one percent of the employment lands. So, so it's a mix.
That's good. What we're trying to show here is that scenario, currently scenario one is the current one. So the ultimate goal, based on your recommendation on, on Innovation District, is that's the scenario four where Class A is forty-two percent and Class, Class A office R and D is forty-five. That's very good. The last one I would ask for is the, which I think is very interesting and, oh, there you go. It's, uh, table thirteen. Even or table fourteen will do as well. I think this shows it clearly.
I think it are.
Is twenty-six.
Slide twenty-six? Okay. Two, two back. Oh, maybe it's not. Councilmember Chua, are you looking at, uh, at, in the technical report from EPS? Is that table, it's table fourteen specifically? What we could do here is, in the presentation, because this is very data-driven, we have had to simplify and so in the tables, it doesn't, it might be best to go toward our backup slides and, and look at,
Okay.
Table fourteen, so it'll be identical to what's in our technical report. So if we can go to the backup slides under table fourteen, please.
There you go.
There it is.
So what we're saying here is, eh, the seventy-four point four acres. Correct me, please, if I'm wrong. If we break it down on column one, like Class A is thirty-one point two acres and Class A office and R and D thirty-three point three and hotel six point eight, seven point, seventy-one point three, that would be ideal usage of the Innovation District. Correct?
That's, that is correct and would begin to maximize job opportunities and allows for future revenues for the city, among, among other po- positive externalities.
Okay, sounds good. I think my, that's my question for now. I'll let my other council members, colleagues, uh, do theirs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Tran.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Chua, for the, uh, questions. Next up, we have Councilmember Dominguez.
Thank you very much, Mayor. At this time, if I could just have, uh, the recommendations, the next steps, what we're being asked to do in terms of the questions. I think there was a slide towards the end. Um, sorry, it was the one with the seven framework? There we go. Um, so definitely, I, I agree in terms of the reduced parking requirements. Um, one of the reasons that I agree with that, um, one, it is a transit-oriented area, which we want to definitely, uh, try to maximize and we hope to get some extra resources to close, um, the last mile on there. But I also want to think about the businesses. Um, I have ran into just different businesses that are running into this challenge of the parking requirements when they're trying to expand their business out. So I think it's going to be a great idea for us to move forward with this policy option and consideration, which I support for that reason. I think it's going to not only help, uh, the entire area, but I do feel since this is a trajectory of almost twenty years that we're talking about. Um, at the time, um, the way that I see this is, um, we have to be patient for long-term change, but impatient for short-term results. And so that's the interesting thing as we are developing this particular, uh, plan. And so I think that is a great recommendation. Um, I think in terms of protection and the preservation of employment, uh, through the design in itself is really important. Um, as maybe we look into using space and maximizing it, um, for different uses. Uh, I, I really like that in the report, um, that was provided, the incubator space that has been designed, um, to really expand opportunity, I think is a great thing and I am really excited. Um, definitely, I hope that there is a social equity lens, uh, for startups and other businesses that we hope to bring, um, as we develop this. Um, so I definitely think that, um, those three, um, expediting the entitlement and the permit process, uh, through development agreements and facilitating pre-development meetings, I think, um, is important. And I would also add maybe pre-existing designs, um, to facilitate that process. Um, and so I think that's a conversation that has happened in Economic and Trade, uh, Commission. So definitely want to make sure that that's something that we move through. Um, and definitely investing in the public infrastructure benefits for our community. Um, I think it's important and, you know, for us, I did not see, um, I think as we plan, maybe the implementation of something of an arts district. If we could go ahead and somehow maybe explore that. Um, I would love to see some sort of art district either there or somewhere else in our city. Um, and just continue with innovation, um, to build, uh, and accelerators. I think that is a huge opportunity, um, for folks, not only here in our city, uh, but definitely to bring in new type of businesses, innovation and technology. And so I also would like to, as we are talking about policy options, um, ensure that as a city, we're talking to our, uh, county, uh, colleagues. Um, I know that they are also moving, um, sometimes they move, uh, faster or slower or vice versa. But I think it's really important for us to express to our county representatives, um, what we're trying to do with certain parts, uh, particular this part, just to make sure that they are aware. Um, if there is parcels, if there are talking about some sort of development, that it's aligning with the city of Milpitas and what we're trying to do for our city. Because, um, I think that's really, really important. And so if we could move forward ensuring that that happens in terms of this policy, I would definitely support it. The other thing I did have, um, some questions about and, um, I'm not too sure if it pertains to a current situation in this particular area, but I could see it maybe in the next twenty years. Um, the warehouse, I know that if you go back to that slide, it said, um, where we want to move forward with ensuring how to maximize and, and bring in potential revenue. Um, I definitely support that completely. And I think it was one of the last slides, uh, the Councilmember Chua, uh, requested. Um, I do believe that it's important for us to maximize this land, uh, to bring in revenue. And so I want to stress that. Yes, that one, perfect. I, I do like scenario four, which is the Class A office and R and D. I think with some of the warehouse, I still have some questions in terms of how does that operate. Um, I know that there has been questions, um, around Amazon. And so I definitely think, again, I don't think this would be an area that they would go into. But just kind of how does that play, play out? I think that's some information that I would want back and seeing what other policies are being in place with, with, uh, folks like Amazon who are coming into our communities, um, picking up ourselves and using it as warehouse. Again, I don't think that would ever happen in this particular side of town, but I, I definitely want to have that information as we are talking about a plan that is gonna probably outlive me, um, at some point. So I definitely want to have that conversation and ensure that there is revenue coming in. Uh, but again, I, I completely agree with the recommendations that staff have placed forward and thank you so much for your work. Thank you, Mayor.
Next, we have Councilmember Fan. Do a little time check here, six thirty-six, thank you very much. Councilmember Fan?
Sure, thank you. Alex, uh, how do our, uh, development fees compare to, uh, neighboring cities?
Thank you, Councilmember Fan. I think I may have to bring in our Planning Director, Ned Thomas, to, to assist with that question. Um, unless, uh, Ty Phion, with your real estate economics, do you have some thoughts there before we go over to Ned? I see Ned's on.
Yeah, thank you, Alex. I was going to defer to Ty Phion too, because he's probably most familiar, not only with our fees, which we'll talk about a little bit later, uh, touch upon, but he's also familiar with what other cities are doing. I don't, I don't know if other cities use a, an impact fee the same way, for infrastructure, the same way that we do in Milpitas.
Um, I, I will say that, um, one thing that's interesting about Milpitas is, I know you, I know you have some fees outside of the, uh, the, the task with the metro area, but, you know, I know, I know it's a very important tool in your particular metro area and there are other cities, um, Milbury, I think, for example, has, has a, a, a set of, a set of fees around its train station specific plan, um, as does, you know, uh, North Bay Shore and certain other districts have them. Um, I will say the numbers, I ha- have looked at some of these numbers and, um, I think your numbers, and I'd, I'd need to, you know, to be honest with you, they're changing all the time. So this is probably, it'll probably, it's, it's part of a larger conversation about the TATIF. It would be good to, um, do those, do those peer community comparisons, just so you can see where you stack up. I think that the, one, one thing I will note is that when we, when we look at the, look at the fees, it's also nice to look a little bit at the context, um, the kind of economic context of them. So for example, um, it's, it's easier to charge higher fees, um, on a land use where you know it's a very, um, you know, it's a very strong performing land use. You know, they has, has room to cover it. I think one of the, one of the, the questions around the TATIF, particularly around office, office, R and D, is I think the hope is that eventually the office, office, R and D se- sector will be very strong here in Milpitas. And, you know, they will be able to pay robust fees along with everybody else. I think, I think there's just a, a kind of a question there of what do we do in the interim as we attract it? Um, but I guess to, may, maybe what I'm saying is I don't have all the information. I have done a bunch of fee comparisons and I think as we, any conversation, as, and perhaps this is where you're going, uh, Councilmembers, any conversation needs to look at those things just to see how we stack up.
Bring it back next time, thanks.
Sure, no worries. Um, that, that's all right. Can, can you pull up the recommendations again? Um, it also, um, would, um, would development agreements, um, provide the kind of flexibility, um, that would, I guess, um, supersede, um, exist, existing barriers to, uh, development? So for example, um, you, you know, uh, the, the fees, um, that, that were mentioned, uh, can, can, and, um, a stakeholder enter into a development agreement, that, um, allows the project to move forward without, um, you know, the, the existing fees in place necessarily being. necessarily being upheld or implemented?
Taifan, do you want to go first? And then either Daniel and I can follow up?
Sure. I would just say that, you know, development, development agreements are kind of negotiated contracts. So if the city, you know, if, if what the developer was offering was attractive enough to you that you felt like that fee reduction was appropriate, you could grant it. There are also development agreements that go the other way that say, in exchange for the certainty we're providing to you here, we actually want to charge you more than the fees. So it's, it's really a kind of a negotiation to that. But it does provide a fair amount of flexibility on both sides to think through all of those different kind of business terms and items to figure out what's best for both parties.
Okay, sure. You know, in, in that regard, then I suppose that would probably be the recommendation that I guess I agree with the most, the utilization of development agreements. For the most part, I agree with most of staff recommendation. However, I think that this tool in particular provides the most flexibility. I'm not quite sure if I'm completely sold on reducing the fees. I think I would have to take a look at the comparables. But at the end of the day, though, regardless of whether or not we have a reduced fee program, having a formulaic development agreement process, a standardized one, I think, would go a long way towards streamlining the speed of business. But all in all, I do agree with most of staff's recommendation and I commend staff on their work.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Fan. Next up, Vice Mayor Montano.
Thank you, Mayor. So first of all, Alex and Daniel and Taifan, Taifan, thank you so much for your presentation. Very informative, comprehensive. I do agree with the policies, except with the sixth, the sixth bullet, if you can expand on that. And that was the, I think that was the impact fees, the community benefit, that cities' investment in public infrastructure benefits the community. Can you, can you expand on what exactly does that mean? What, what does that look like?
Well, we just added a bullet there regarding the fact that the city's already investing in public infrastructure around the area. So, and I think Taifan, Taifan can add to this as it relates to the infrastructure and the city's investment around the, the transit center.
Yeah, I would, I, I think the, the point, I think we're trying to make here, and you know, Alex told me if I'm off the track here, but you know, every, every public investment, whether it's right in a transit station or in new streets or bike pad connections, makes a place more attractive. And so not only do you get those public amenities, but we also see an increase in, you know, the increasing lease rates in office buildings, improved feasibility. So where we can, those public infrastructure investments, and my understanding is there are, you know, several planned and laid out and envisioned as part of the metro, the draft metro specific plan, those will be important too, because they really help to shape some of the, you know, the kind of public realm and the, and the public places and infrastructure that go along with complementing and attracting all the new development we're hoping to see.
Right, right. I understand that we have impact fees. And for example, the specific, the transit, transit specific area. So I'm wondering if, and at the Innovation Center, will that be a whole new district? Or would it be part of the whole, the transit? Would, will we be disaggregating that area and charging impact fees for that Innovation Center, Innovation Area? Or is that going to be still with part with the current one that we have right there?
I, I just.
Pick that, Alex. Great question, Vice Mayor. The intent at this point is to keep it within the Milpitas Metro specific plan. So there'll be no, at this point, we have not had any conversations about specific fees for the Innovation District specifically. It's really just within the actual specific plan, a designated area for very specific employment uses that will complement the entire district for the metro plan.
I guess, okay, so right now that area, there's areas right there that are not developed, but they will be developed. You know, we want the Class A office five-story, the Class A eight-story, the Class A research and development, and high-rise residential. So that, that, those areas, I guess, you're saying that the impact fees for the metro specific plan is, I guess, going to be grandfathered in there? Or are we looking into adding impact fees? And because I was, what I'm thinking is, in order to attract businesses, maybe we can have some kind of an incentive or some type of a waiver or a fee, or have the impact fees reduced to attract these high-profile businesses, especially is these Fortune 500 businesses. That's just a thought, maybe, maybe we can put that carrot out there.
Vice Mayor Montano, I'm glad that Ned has reappeared here. You're going to hear from him now and at the next presentation that there is a incentive zone that's being considered, perhaps, and you're going to hear this in a little bit, but around the Innovation District in order to spur economic vitality, reinvigorate that area. We've talked about very old tired product. How do we, how do we inject it with some energy? And I'm going to hand it over to Ned to talk about this incentive zone idea.
Okay, but I still have a couple of few questions, if you don't mind.
Oh, sure. I'm sorry.
So Taifan mentioned at the residential will be 12-story, and I think we're having a height, we're looking, revisiting our height, building height, because we don't want to, a lot of these high-rise buildings to block the view of our residence. So I think that, just to let you know, that's, I think we're looking into that. That's been put out there by the mayor and myself. Also, the traffic circulation, I think the traffic circulation is very important. You need to have a, a good, a good plan, how that traffic flow. And I think developers are really, they really look and they, they want to, I think that's what they look for, to see if it's conducive for their employees. So also, I know that Cisco Systems, when they first came on board in the city of Milpitas, they built a really high, high-profile, well, not profile, a state-of-the-art childcare center. You notice it's right off of the freeway, off of 880. And perhaps we can have something like that at the Innovation Center. But, you know, and just to go back, when I was, when I was thinking about the Innovation Center, I was thinking about a campus, a campus that has research and development, it has, you know, it just has a mixed, mixed use, it has all sorts of, but I wasn't really thinking about a high-rise residential. But, and, you know, and I wasn't really thinking about warehouses either. And I noticed that the warehouses are, it's a high percentage here. So I was thinking more research and development, high-tech, and, and it also, it needs to be aesthetically appealing, meaning that it needs to have art in there, in that area. So yeah, those are my thoughts on the Innovation District and really make it a Innovation District where the new ideas, you know, MIT comes, you know, people that come with, with some things to offer to technology. I think that's what, that's what we need in Milpitas. We really do need that. So if we do that, we will, we will surely have economic development, economic prosperity in our city. So with that, I think it's a great idea, just maybe incorporate some of those ideas I mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Feedback received. Feedback received. I think our Director of Planning and Director of Economic Development jotted down those notes. I thank you for your feedback, Vice Mayor Montano. Let's keep this evening going, if we may. I want to go to Councilmember Chua.
Thank you, Mayor Tran. Before I give my feedback on the questions, I have one, one question to all of you. I understand that you enumerated certain challenges that we are facing. And those are on page three of your write-up. The lack of large and vacant sites, competition for Class A, high cost of development, competition for lower intensity uses. How do we overcome those? You have this goal, Innovation District, and you have these challenges. What are your thoughts on overcoming those challenges?
Daniel, do you want to start here?
Sure. It's an excellent question, Councilmember. Really, that's, that's the part of the project that we're working on right now on phase two with the implementation, the Innovation District Framework Plan. There's a lot of case study and best, and lesson learned that we're looking at at the moment. We haven't gotten too deep into this phase two at this point in time as we're looking really to receive some feedback from the council on the initial phase one study. But given the information we're hearing today, and the fact that we'll be regrouping as a team to, to really move into a much faster pace for phase two, we're going to be able to come back with some of that information. Because at the current moment, we, we don't have that fully fleshed out at this point in time.
Okay, sounds good. So can you bring up the slide, please, for, for your, for feedback for me on the different, the different recommendations that you guys have? Okay. Number one, protect and preserve. I do agree with that. That's, that's good for the Innovation District. Offer flexibility in density. It depends. It depends on the type of development like Mayor, Mayor and Vice Mayor do support. There's a height limit. I agree with them on that one as well. Reduce parking. This is, this is in the, in that zone area on trans metro specific plan. I think that is doable. And reduce development impact fees. I do agree with Mayor Tran that it depends as well. It depends who's asking. We shouldn't give it like 100% right away. And I, and I think that's also the, the thought of Councilmember Fan. Expedite entitlement and processes. I think we're doing that already in terms of the planning and building departments and, and city investment and public infrastructure, private and public. Again, it depends. So most of the time, most of the areas that you recommended, I do agree, but there's got to be some flexibility depending on who's asking. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Tran.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Chua. All feedback received. What a great item this is tonight. Let's go to public comment. And I'll look for anybody in the chamber going once, going twice, no one from the chamber, going to the Zoom, going to the chamber in the cloud, looking for our attendees. Thanks for joining us, folks. I see about seven attendees, lucky seven, seven attendees this evening. If you'd like to comment on the gen item number one, please raise your virtual raised hand, your virtual hand. Okay, going once, going twice. You know, virtual raised hand. That's it for public comment. Item number one. Okay, great. I just want to sort of say a few last words for item number one. This is such an exciting item. This is one of the most monumental items in our city's history, bringing in industry, as with our forefounders, bringing in the Ford factory. This is up there just as much. I do believe we are going to bring in a premier world-class technology company to really drive this Class A office space, R and D, this and that. This is just a historic, historic item that we're working on. And it certainly is felt by myself, and it really should be for all. A district is a great place for economy. You go to places like San Francisco or New York City, you got the financial district. And here, we're talking about an Innovation District. But imagine just being in that environment where there's just a high concentration of folks that are working in a certain industry to drive our economy, and not just here in Milpitas, but really the global economy, if I may say. And it could happen right here in Milpitas. And we had the world-class Ford Motor Company, and I think we're going to have a world-class Innovation District. I want to give a shout out to our Director of Planning, Ned Thomas, and our Director of Economic Development, Alex Andrade, for their leadership on this. Taifan, great to have you here. And of course, Daniel, a huge part of our team over many years. It's been a pleasure. So yeah, that's all I wanted to say. Maybe folks can continue to think about this Innovation District and continue to imagine and reimagine as we move forward. Now, Alex, is there anything else you need from us tonight?
Mayor Tran, I think this has been a good conversation. We have a lot of takeaways and feedback and look forward to coming back to address some of those items that were discussed, as well as give you an update on phase two of the economic development or the EPS study.
Great work, everybody. Okay, it's just a bit before 7:00 PM. Let's keep it going. One more item tonight. Let's do a great job. Item number two is receive a presentation on the draft Milpitas Metro specific plan. And we'll go to our Director of Planning, Ned Thomas, to take us away.
Thank you, Mayor Tran, members of the council. I've been enjoying the discussion on Alex's item for the fiscal benefits of employment lands. You know, the work that they're doing on that project just dovetails so nicely with everything that we're doing and in cooperation or in collaboration with the council on the, the metro specific plan itself. I often like to say that planning sets the table, but economic development is already in the kitchen preparing the main course. So it was hard to know which one of these items should go first. They, you know, it's kind of a chicken and an egg thing because they're, they're so intertwined with one another. But it's just like to give a shout out to Alex and just say what a pleasure it has been to work with him and his team. And of course, Taifan kind of has his foot in both camps. It's really one camp, but we'll be hearing from him later on as the work on the metro plan continues and we turn our attention to all of the items that we talked about earlier on the impact fees. And he's the subconsultant on that as well. So it, we're very pleased to be here tonight to present an overview of the draft metro plan. To, I know you've been waiting several months for that. I'll, you'll recall that we started all of this back in February 2020, and just a few weeks before the pandemic hit and everything went virtual. So this is a very interesting plan in that it's been completely done in a virtual setting. And all of the outreach to the community and all of the work with the council, the series of workshops that we held earlier this year to establish the framework and the key policies. And then over the summer, Jane Lin, our primary consultant, and her team have been working on the polit, policy document itself. The required environmental review under SEQA is currently underway. We also have Barry Bergman, who is the Transportation Subconsultant from W Trans here tonight. He will help Jane with the presentation. And of course, we also have our project manager, Kevin Riley, here to help answer any of your questions. And he's become quite an expert on all things related to the task area and the metro plan itself. And I'll, I know Jane will go into a little bit more detail on next steps toward the end of her presentation, but I would like to say upfront that tonight, you know, we're sharing this draft document with the council first, looking forward to your feedback and direction, of course. This really starts what will be a rather long public outreach process. The draft will be made available online for review and comment by Milpitas residents and business owners. We do have a community meeting scheduled on Monday, October 25th, to go into a similar presentation to the community. And just, I'll mention that, we will continue to publicize that over the next few weeks. And then there will also be an online forum that Jane will talk about. One of the great benefits that we've all learned during the pandemic is that we can do things in person and we can be very effective in holding our community meetings online and receive a lot of very useful input from the community. receive a lot of very useful input from the community. So with that, again, the consultants have drafted the planned document. Environmental review under SEQA is currently underway and Jane is going to share with you what the document, the draft policy document looks like. Some, remind you of some of the details that we have already talked about along the way and show you some of the things that we're coming back with, and then we are all here for, to answer your questions and provide input, and thank you, I'll turn the time over to Jane.
Thank you so much, Ned, I'm going to start the share of the presentation, please. Okay, great. Just like you saw, just like Ned has mentioned, we're very excited to have this presentation on the draft specific plan for the Milpitas Metro. Today, we'll really just talk about the plan, here's, here's a shot of the cover. We'll go over some of the highlighted policies and especially to do with land use and densities, transportation planning, in which we have W Trans here to present that portion, the public realm and economics and finance and next steps. So just to let you know, this has been a great process so far, we've had a lot of fun working on this project and also bringing this to you to hear your feedback into the framework. Like Ned mentioned, we started early in 2020 and here we are with our specific plan in its draft form and the EIR started, so this is a very big milestone for us and we're very excited to bring it to this point. And that means it's time for us, for everybody else to take a look and for feedback to help finalize the plan. And so in the draft plan, just because it's always fun to see how it looks, these are just sort of the chapter headers. This is also a reminder to anyone who's new to this process that there was a Milpitas Transit Area Specific Plan, formerly known as the TASP. And this is a new specific plan that replaces it. And it's been renamed the Milpitas Metro Specific Plan. And in it, there are six really important chapters and we will just touch lightly on each one of them. The full detail is found at our website, milpetasmetro.org. All of our policies stem from this vision that we've been presenting since early last year, but the whole idea, well, the TASP was really instrumental in transforming this area so that it was, so that it's a really great transit-oriented district. And it has done, it's done a very good job in transforming about half of it, so the Milpitas Metro Plan really is focused on the second half of transformation to create a more complete neighborhood, and that has to do with all the things that go along with making a complete neighborhood, including small businesses, neighborhood services and retail space near, for jobs near transit, you just heard so much about that with the Innovation District. And also, just to make sure that we have the right amount of affordable housing and market rate housing in this area and making all our connections to the transit and to, throughout the neighborhood, better so that it's much more feasible to connect on foot or by bike. And of course, to make sure that as we are building this area up, that it is also full of great amenities and open spaces and that these are wonderful variety of shared public spaces. And of course, the main thing is also to make sure that there's a more enhanced sense of place so that everybody knows when they arrive at Milpitas Metro that this is exactly what it is, it's a center for Milpitas and a real regional center. So we'll just start with some of our land uses and densities, this is part of our Chapter Two. And in this, in this plan, we have divided the plan area into sub-districts and the sub-districts are pretty closely aligned with the TASP, but they, they are split in a little bit different ways. And the two areas, well, there's actually three or more that are receiving greater attention in this plan versus the TASP is the Great Mall. And in the TASP, the Great Mall was really largely left alone, it was only zoned for commercial and did not allow housing, and so this is one thing that the Milpitas Metro will address. And then, of course, you heard a lot about the Innovation District and that includes an expansion area from the original TASP that includes an area all the way up to 680. And this is some area that is very close to the Transit Center, so that's one of the reasons is to bring those kinds of jobs closer, as close as possible to transit. There are some additional properties that were added on Main Street because they're very contiguous with this area, and also this plan looks at how to make better connections through Tango and complete that sub-district and bring it into the, connect it to the Transit Center even better. On the right, you see our land use map and there are a few new zoning designations here, a lot of them have to do with business park research and development. And they also allow for more housing throughout the area, and we'll talk about that in more detail in just a moment. So when we were, this is just a little reminder slide from when we brought this to you, I think, I believe in January, so may seem like long ago, but we were talking about land use and density with you in January. And these are some of the things that you, you had given us feedback on, and really these land uses, policies are based on some of that feedback, and it's really about having a great neighborhood commercial mix and making sure that the land uses that we bring to this are very strategic and appropriate for the area, especially since it's transit-oriented. And, you know, that there will have to be some density in some places. It makes sense to have it here. We know that Milpitas is growing and of all the places in Milpitas, having growth near transit is the most logical place. If it doesn't go here, it has to go somewhere, and I think that's a really important thing to take away from what we heard back then. So part of our highlights are, of course, at the Great Mall, and this is just screenshot of some of the diagrams that we have in there, these are illustrative, illustrative plans. And so they're not, and I need to just make sure that we dwell on this a minute, a minute, because what this plan does is it doesn't say that this is the way it has to be, but it allows for the capacity of something to happen here. And in order to do that, we need to come up with a, a sense of what that scale is, so what we've done is really studied it very in a very detailed way and tried to get a sense of how, how much, how could possibly lay out. So this is really one idea out of many, oh, what happened to my screen? Are you not seeing it anymore? I'm wondering what happened here.
She'll bring it back in just a moment, Jane, the IT department has a they'll bring it up.
Okay, all right, I hope you can all see it now. Anyway, this is just to show that the Great Mall, there's, there's a lot of possibilities of what can happen through over the next 20 years. You know, large, it could be that only the surface parking lots may see some change and maybe pretty minimal change over the next 20 years, and that's okay. But there could be also much more significant change. Any part of the Great Mall might redevelop and that's sort of what this middle diagram right here kind of saying, and doesn't mean that that's where it would be cut off, it's just sort of to say that the, any portion might change, and then there's the possibility of something pretty transformative. But if we're thinking about the Middle Road, we wanted to make sure that this plan makes it possible for for this area to be what it should be, a transit-oriented neighborhood. It is next to two amazing assets, which is the VTA Light Rail stations at two, at two locations along its border of Great Mall Parkway. And of course, one of those stations being part of the Transit Center, which is an amazing transit hub, I mean, it is one of the best connected places in all of the South Bay and Santa Clara County, so. Also, just to say that there's a couple other major ideas that are part of our policies that have to do with making this area a little bit more walkable than it is now. And this, of course, again, is based on how much the the properties, which include Simon, but also many bordering parcels as well around the Simon Great Mall Park property, there's, there's quite a few individual owners, including the VTA. And how that all develops is, is you know, these, these policies and ideas are out there to encourage mixed use, to encourage open space and gathering places and a linear park, and also to make sure that there is there's a, a network of many different kinds of places in making the neighborhood as complete as possible. And I know you've heard a lot about this tonight, the Innovation District, but this is just to say that here are some of the graphics that we are showing in our Milpitas Metro Specific Plan, just of some of the ideas of what could go on here, and really, a key idea is to make the focal point of commercial development at Montague Expressway and South Milpitas Boulevard. And also to connect to, directly to the Transit Center using this road that would connect over Berryessa Creek and really make it possible for people to walk right to the Transit Center from from office and R and D spaces. And so this is, this might also include maybe a little bit more of this land here as well, but for now, this is envisioning a business park and read of, uh, R and D land uses for this area. So as a high-level summary, this is perhaps, if you, there was a table to kind of see how this is all summarized, this is it, this is just to say that the different land uses that we're talking about with the Milpitas Metro Specific Plan, and I think this is not new, we've been definitely talking about this all along. The amount is about 7,000 for the entire plan area. 7,000 dwelling units, that is, and 2.5 million office, 2.5 million square feet of office, half a million of light industrial, 300,000 of retail and 700 hotel rooms. This is in addition to what is already allowed by the TASP, so that is another thing to consider, so this is, this is to complete and, you know, thinking about how it's built out now, it, it's about halfway. This is to complete what it is like there to make it as as much of a transit-oriented district as possible. And just to make sure that this is clear and sort of the overall city's goals for housing, we know that Milpitas will grow and Metro is a really big part of this, and so if it, we're talking about 7,000 units, we're talking about that over two cycles of the general planned housing element updates. And so right now, I mean, that's stemming from the, the city's obligations for regional housing needs, so I think for its arena, so this is, this is really a great opportunity to meet that arena and also to make sure that there is the capacity over the next two cycles of the housing element. All right, now we'll kind of switch topics to the public realm. And the public realm, in this case, really is about a lot of different kinds of connections, there are trails, there's the linear park, there's new roads, there's ways to connect into the, you know, there was that road that connects into the Innovation District, there's new connections into the Tango Subdistrict, there's many of these things. And we had come to you before to talk about the connectivity. And really, this is about providing that kind of connection so that it makes it possible for people to walk and to bike and to find alternatives to driving, so being that's a transit area, transit-oriented area, this is one of the greatest things, you have these options to get around without a car, and so making that as great as possible by improving wayfinding, making sure it's convenient, making sure there's, you know, activities that are destinations for those places, those paths. Those are really part of the plan. So in our plan, we've, this is just a very summary diagram, we're talking about improving the Great Mall Parkway and the Main Street intersection as well as part of that. We're thinking about the way that we can connect to the Innovation District, there's some improvements that have already been made that we need to acknowledge, of course, there's the completed crossing across Montague. But there's another one that's coming, that's at South Penitentiary Creek, and there's also more improvements along South Penitentiary Creek, that's the East Channel, that can really tie the parks. There's one in Tango and there's one at McCandless that would really help tie all of those together and tie it all the way to the Transit Center, so these are really important connections to make sure that this whole area really comes together. You saw some of these ideas from the very start, we are very excited to think about the Great Mall Parkway as a place that gives the whole district identity using the underside of the Light Rail track as potential place for public art. Really transforming the street that, to make sure that there's activity that can happen on its side, that it can accommodate bicycles and people strolling and really making it a really active, vibrant corridor. All the while, which is really wonderful about this, this strip of roadway is that there is such a wide roadway that it's easy to, or it's possible to make the lanes narrower, yet not remove a lane. So there's the same number of lanes for cars, but now, in addition, there's so much more that can happen with bicycles and people walking and it just makes it possible for this street to serve more people, so it's, it's pretty great. And this is just a little, I think this is something a little bit newer, but as we are thinking further along Great Mall Parkway, this is the intersection of Main and Great Mall Parkway, it's a pretty challenging place for all the different directions of vehicles and bikes and all that stuff. But if we are rethinking this area, this can be made into a much more safe environment with protected bike lanes and also a reimagined plaza that's a new entrance to the Great Mall Subdistrict, so there's a lot of improvements that are being called out for that area to make it safer. Also, just to say that there's also improvements made to make sure that the streets that are possibly going to be built in Great Mall, they, in that sub-district, that they are following design guidelines to make the streets as pedestrian-friendly and welcoming as possible for outdoor dining or for safety and just to make it a lot nicer to be there, so that's, there's a lot of streetscape guidelines as well for those kinds of new streets. And of course, you know, throughout the policies, the whole thing is to, about this enhancing this sense of place, so that, that really has a couple parts to it, one is just our general spatial understanding of where we are. Of course, that can be done with signage and wayfinding, it could be done with making really attractive social spaces that you remember and you think of them as destinations, or we can create new landmarks with new buildings and, and exciting vibrant architecture. And with that, I mean, there's, there's this opportunity here, and this is part of the character of the area for Milpitas Metro to really stand out and to have a very forward, future-forward, contemporary kind of look to it and to be progressive and innovative, and part of Silicon Valley is really one of, if, if it's a node along the BART line and it's this important place that wants to attract innovation, this is showing off the technology, showing off the innovation in the kind of architecture is really part of the building design guidelines and standards that are written in. And that's part of Chapter Three. There were, there's a lot about the public realm that has to do with parks, I mean, the public realm where we share spaces, there, these are the spaces in between buildings. And there's lots of different things that we talked about that had to do with rethink, rethinking the park's value system and model, and we are maintaining, our, the feedback was really great from all of you about the parks, and so we are maintaining the three and a half acre per thousand. And so we are maintaining the three and a half acre per thousand residents, um, park fee, park and rec fee. And that will be utilized in a way to make sure that we have the variety that to um, the right variety of parks and the types of um, parks that we hope to have in this more urbanized neighborhood. Um, we're also encouraging rooftop gardens and of course, making sure that native plants and pollinators are all incorporated as well. So um, making sure that there's really great um, landscaping and great outdoor spaces is um, vital to this area, which is a little bit more built up in comparison to the rest of Milpitas. So um, the, the highlights here for the policies have to do with that level of service rating that um, uh, applies to the parks. It has to do with onsite open spaces and that developers are required to provide communal spaces for residents and publicly um, accessible open spaces, um, contributing to our public realm. Um, it also allows for public and private partnerships. And in the Great Mall in particular, that this minimum size is one acre for um, open spaces. And those can be placed, you know, wherever it is logical, but um, as things develop. So um, that minimum size is some, is a, a good size for a gathering space. Um, now we move a little bit over to the Tango Sub District, which is really quite um, a, I think it's one of the best um, places where we're really connecting across from McCandless to Tango Park. Um, there's so many different opportunities here for these different kinds of parks. And of course, this is our illustration below um, where we're showing how, you know, this can, the trails are not just a connection for um, daily use, but they're really kind of a place for people to gather and um, to use um, as for recreation and for um, getting here to there. So I think this is one of the best things about this area. It'll really make it um, very livable to have these kinds of public spaces and open spaces um, throughout and connected all to each other. And at this point, I'm going to pass this over to Barry um, Bergstrom with W Trans. Talk a little bit about transportation planning. Barry?
Hey, thanks Jane. Um, so let's uh, does someone else have control of this slide?
Oh, I'll, I'll go to the next one. Here we go. Just call out next.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I'm just gonna start by recapping some of the comments that we previously received about the direction that we're heading in with this. Um, so just to start out here, you support the Milpitas Metro policy approach implementing the general plan priorities? Um, so focusing on multimodal transportation, reducing VNT and equitable access to mobility? And the majority said yes. And then also regarding using TDM strategies, transportation demand management and reducing VMT as an approach. And the answer to that was yes as well and also emphasis on, on pedestrian safety. So um, just, just a couple of themes that I'm going to be hitting on here is, is focusing on how do we go about reducing VMT and the types of TDM strategies we're talking about? Um, parking reduction using, using lower um, lower minimums. Um, emission reduction is not, not so much about um, reducing traffic, but, but more on the emissions side, which is where a lot of this, um, a lot of these kinds of things are, are driven by. Uh, next please. So vehicle miles traveled, this is um, a new shift in the way development is happening as of last year. We used to be looking for sequel purposes at delay and, and intersection congestion. And now it's much more vehicle miles traveled, it's much more driven by reducing greenhouse gas emissions. So um, the city adopted a policy last, or earlier this year. And the, the main takeaway from Milpitas Metro is that areas within a half a mile of major transit stops, which includes BART and the Light Rail stations, um, are presumed to have a less than significant impact on VMT. Um, if they meet these various criteria listed in the bulletin, so floor area ratio, residential density, um, consistency with the regional plan, not providing more parking than is required and, and also not replacing affordable housing with a fewer number of moderate or high income residential units. So since, since the, the project does check off all those boxes, the entire Milpitas Metro area, as you can see in this diagram, that reddish line around the edge shows where that buffer is. The impact for VMT is presumed to be less than significant and so there are no impacts for sequel purposes. Um, at the same time, the, the policy does look at um, trying to reduce VMT and promote um, climate, um, climate protection goals. And so if it were not in this screened out area, the goals would be to be fifteen percent less than the average VMT for the countywide level for, for residential and um, employment based and, and industrial uses. So that's um, next slide please. So, so that fifteen percent um, below the countywide averages is considered good practice and, and although it's not required for sequel purposes, it is established as a goal for the project. Um, so to, to get there, all new development coming in would be required to adopt, um, to take part in, in these TDM initiatives. Um, so the real difference is that if it were compulsory, then there would be ongoing um, monitoring to ensure that those goals were achieved and potential penalties. This is really much more aspirational. Um, so participation in a Transportation Management Association or TMA, so that's, that would be acting as kind of a coordinating body, it's particularly for um, smaller business residential complexes. Um, and, and that's something that was highlighted in the general plan is looking at on the development of a TMA. So this could be a Milpitas Metro only TMA or it could be done on a citywide basis. Um, examples of the kinds of strategies that would be, that would be done would be subsidized and transit passes, providing funding towards a shuttle service, which could be to access the transit system. It could be some kind of local circulator, unbundled parking. Um, since right now parking is typically paid, it, it's a hidden cost. It's often just lumped in with rent and sort of break that cost out. And if someone really wants the parking, then they would be paying for that separately. Then monitoring, marketing, education to make sure people are aware of those services and also to track, you know, how well are we doing? Are we getting to that fifteen percent goal and are there things we can do to tweak the different measures and, and hopefully get a better result? Next please. Um, so parking requirements, as was touched on a little bit in the previous presentation. Uh, we're talking about reducing the minimum parking requirements and, and also instituting a maximum. And there, there are a number of, of reasons, just really trying to strike a balance. Um, as it shows in this diagram, parking takes up a lot of space. And often parking is, is really more, the, the amount provided is really more than is actually needed. So the key is to try to strike a balance, um, what, what is desirable and needed for, for business, for residents to make this an attractive place to be. And at the same time, how do we encourage the use of all these other transportation modes that are available? Um, and how do we not add to congestion and make, and, and help the circulation locally? So it's um, this is intended to be flexible. Um, so the, uh, there's also a point system that's being recommended similar to what was done for the hotel uses earlier, where adding measures that demonstrate a reduction in demand for parking will allow, allow um, businesses to reduce their parking further. So whether that is, um, I'm just being located near transit is um, is helpful already. But then to um, to get into a shared parking agreement so that might be able to use existing spaces if there are complementary uses, or providing passes, transit passes for employees. Um, so there's, there's a number of measures that can be done to, to really um, increase the, the use of these other ways and reduce the need for parking further. Next please. Um, bike parking is um, is currently required by the city and this is kind of a rethinking of the way that is done. Um, I think what, what has been done and, and is done in, in many places is that it's, it's often done as a percentage of the vehicle parking requirements. Um, one of the things we're, we're talking about reducing the vehicle parking requirements and if we keep doing it in that way, it also means that the barking, bike parking requirements would be reduced as well. So um, thi- this is also more precise in that it is geared toward the specific land uses. Um, and it also looks at short term versus long term parking. So for residents, for employees who'll be at a place for an entire day, this would be, provide more secure parking, a locked facility for people who are going to be coming in for maybe an hour or two, a rack out on the street might, might be adequate. Um, so, so thinking and, and obviously those are much less expensive. So it's really trying to gear it to the actual users and, and um, get an understanding of how many people will be there for different purposes and, and that's what these ratios are based on. These, these are um, based on the National Association for the um, for pedestrian bicycle professionals, so National Association. And I guess it's back to you Jane.
All right, thank you so much Barry. Um, this is the last portion of the um, this is the last chapter. Two chapters would be about, the fifth chapter is about infrastructure and the sixth chapter is about implementation. And so this is really a quick overview, there's so much more detail in the chapter itself. So um, I would say if you want to learn more, there's definitely, so there's plenty to read about. Anyway, that there's quite a bit of um, identified infrastructure um, that is needed throughout the area to support the kinds of um, the capacity that we've been talking about for the land use. And there are street improvements like to Great Mall Parkway, for example, there's new roads to build, there's new parks. There's also all sorts of other infrastructure that is listed over here. And just, this is um, on the next slide, you're gonna see a big list, so just get ready. So this is just letting you know and not, I'm not gonna read through all of this, but it, the task had collected fees and completed many improvements that were listed in the task and that is on the left. And in the, while doing this over the last couple years, there's a lot of other things that have been added to that over the years. Um, and they, they have to do with all sorts of little adjustments here and there and things that changed um, as, as things got built out. So that's also added in here. So these are, these are things that are either completed or sort of on their way. And um, and so as we're looking for the future items, these are the, the kinds of infrastructure that has not been um, completed yet. The, there's quite a bit that in the black, those are the things that have already been identified. And there's new things for the, from the Milpitas Metro specific plan in that um, pink purple color. Um, that, those are all newer items that are being added to this whole area. And so it's important that the um, new capacity imagined does support these kinds of infrastructure. And just, this is, this would be the final chapter and a very quick summary of it. I know you heard quite a bit of other um, information about um, things similar to this and that with the Innovation District and fees. So um, in the metro area, there was, there is a Tata fee, a Transit Area Development Impact Fee. Um, there's also other citywide fees and there's other grants that can be pursued as well. There's, there's many tools that be, can be used to make this plan happen. And so um, those tools could include development agreements, um, incentive zoning and value capture, EIFD, tax increment financing, or other kinds of affordable housing support. Um, the, there's all these funds that could improve, you know, the, they go to the basic infrastructure program or the capital improvement pro- program. These are, these are different ways that um, funding can make the improvements, implement the improvements. So that is a quick wrap up of all of the work that we've been doing on our six chapters of the draft plan. And just wanted to touch a little bit upon um, the updates to uh, that the, that there's related city policy updates as well that would be um, part of the Milpitas Metro specific plan process. So there's uh, there would be general plan land use, um, map amendments, some zoning ordinance amendments that add the new zoning districts, um, a revision of the zoning map in coordination with the Midtown specific plan. Also this, what um, the MMSP, that's the Milpitas Metro specific plans, um, subsequent EIR. And this is subsequent to the task, so it's after the task. This is um, this has been started and uh, basically it means that individual projects that are consistent with the specific plan qualify for statutory exemption under SEQUA. So that's really um, important for, it's a great thing for the um, for the projects here. So here's just a quick little flow chart, this is pretty much the end of the presentation. But just to say, here's where we're going. Next, we have the draft plan, we're bringing it to you today. Um, we're bringing it out to everyone at a community open house and that is on October twenty fifth. Um, for those who wish to comment further, um, there's an open period for our online open house. Um, that goes all the way, um, the day after the um, open house through November eighth. And there you can leave comments and um, and uh, provide feedback. Um, and if, and it is in a form of a survey. So for those of you who are um, thinking about this, there's also the opportunity to win some um, gift cards for uh, participating. And then um, from all that feedback, from your feedback today, from that feedback as well, um, we will be honing the plan to make it the final plan. We'll bring that to Planning Commission for their recommendation to you. Um, and we'll bring, we'll bring um, the whole final plan back to you, um, City Council. And um, that's when you would have a hearing to uh, potentially adopt the plan. Meanwhile, the draft EIR um, is being developed as well. That will also be brought to City Council to you um, before there is a final uh, finalized EIR. So um, I want to just take a very brief moment to acknowledge um, the team members from M Group from, for working very hard um, on this draft plan. And um, for everyone to go to milpetismetro.org to check out the plan in entirety. It's quite long, but it's not as long as the task. So um, it is, it is a, we're very proud of it and we hope that you um, uh, think that it is capturing the ideas and feedback that you have provided us all along the way. And with that, I think um, we'd love to hear your thoughts and questions and comments. Thank you.
A great job, great job. Thank you very much Jane and uh, uh, all our uh, team members here, I think. There we go, there's a screen, Barry, and I give everybody a shout out here, uh, Kevin. Um, uh, and our city staff for all their work. I uh, know that this is an item that we'll be working on really continuously through uh, next calendar year. I will continue to gather some of my thoughts and questions and concerns. Uh, but for tonight, uh, I'm okay. Uh, but I do have some things I will gather uh, some inquiries. Uh, but overall, I'm really excited about the Milpitas Metro. Uh, Jane, I, I feel like uh, uh, we've been working with you and your team, uh, Kevin, or you know, for some time now, it's been like over a year now or something, huh?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's pretty, pretty um, um, pretty valued that uh, we're still working on this. And of course, it's a big deal and I think we're putting just amount of ti- just a good amount of time. All right, let's go public comment real quick. Let's get public comment out the way, look in the chamber, one was going twice, no public comment, I'll go to the Zoom. Uh, folks joining us on the Zoom platform, welcome. Hey, I see a couple attendees here. All right, first with the virtual raised hand for the public comment, we have Tom Valori.
Good evening, Council. Uh, one of the things that I've wondered about ever since I saw this plan initially was why Main Street isn't treated as an integral part of this development. It's so close to it and this is so, so overwhelming that uh, Main Street could be overcome if it wasn't treated as an integral part of this and made a part of it. Just a thought. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Tom. I think Main Street has its own specific plan. All right, next up, anybody else uh, with the virtual raised hand here? It's the public comment of the item, item two for tonight's agenda. No guests, you know, further virtual raised hands, one was going. Okay, I see no further virtual raised hands, one was going twice, I say with the public comments, thank you very much. Alright, back to the uh, agenda item tonight. I, I really look forward to uh, seeing the uh, community engagement take place here pretty soon. I hope our city can really do a robust sort of marketing. So that members of the community can participate. Uh, we will be looking for attendance numbers to see if uh, folks are going to be engaged. I know when folks uh, back then did the Transit Area Specific Plan, uh, there wasn't uh, enough engagement. There may have been engagement, uh, but I really don't think there is enough. And when we're doing a heavy lift like this, where uh, the density is going up and, and those sorts of things. But we really have to work on our community engagement. And some may say transparency, but you know, we're always transparent, a little too transparent sometimes. But uh, we're gonna be super transparent as usual, but just, I would love to see uh, a lot of feedback uh, from our community members on this one. The Milpitas Metro is happening together, uh, it's not gonna be driven by the council or staff solely or individually. Uh, it will be driven by the whole Milpitas community, so I'm looking forward to that. And um, when we do that, this will be a very uh, big success. Uh, do you have questions uh, that I'm gonna really follow up on after the meeting, such as the parking uh, requirements? And um, looking at. The plan amendments to see uh, how much we're gaining in different zoning types, land uses, how much we're losing. And those are things that uh, are very. Uh, detailed, and so I'll gather that information because it will take time. I will gather that information following this meeting, I'll, I'll ping our city manager. And work with uh, our organization to figure out those calculations. I know that when we approve the Milpitas Metro, all the math has to be right, and I'm so encouraged. There's one slide Jane that you had showing all the potential like square footage additions for business and units. Uh, for business, and, and I know there's one for housing too, but um, you know, those are the things that really excite me. I, I wanna add business to Milpitas, and I wanna just be a sponge for tax revenues uh, in every way we can. Yeah, I see Kevin smiling, yep, yeah, yeah. Okay, great, alright, great smile, alright, uh, that's it for, that's my uh, comment tonight. Just because I know if I sit up here and I ask all of these specific numbers, we're gonna be here for another four hours. So um, I welcome my colleagues to ping in, this is an ongoing piece of work. Uh, Jane and Kevin, and I think Barry, everybody's available, our city staff's available every single day. Um, um, and I know um, if folks wanna keep it light tonight, yeah, and the heavy research can happen. While we're not all sitting here, that's my recommendation. But I will look for any requests to speak from the deists. Or virtual deists, alright, here we go, Vice Mayor Montana.
Excuse me, thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, Jane, that's a very in-depth presentation, I really appreciated that. This is going to be our new downtown, it seems, it's, I know it's twenty years out. But um, it's very, very comprehensive. Uh, so I was thinking, we should have a convention center there. Um, because it's going to be a Mecca where you have businesses, you have retail, you have. Commercial, you have a, it's just gonna be bustling, and I really feel that a convention center would be uh, a good place to be. In that area, and I don't know where, but um, I think that would be, I'm trying to think out of the box, since you know, this is. This is going to be the future of Milpitas, and we might as well make it, make it a nice place where people are going to be bustling. And it's, it's gonna be really, really a place to go. Um, and I'm really glad that we have a mural ordinance now in place. I think that uh, that area is really gonna pop with the murals that will be going up. It's gonna be a fantastic place, it's gonna be a destination. And um, my last thought, I know it says here that it's about half a mile to uh, the transit. It says uh, to transit and to each other, it's uh, it's a unique. Let's see, all generally within half mile walk to the transit center. So is that also from the Innovation Center, that half mile? Because I know we were talking about a spoke like a bike, you know, like a, a spoke where all the trails will, will be centered. And is the center of the uh, transit area, the metro area?
Yes, yes, actually Innovation District is really well positioned, right next to it, and it may be even shorter than half a mile. So it's really ideal.
Okay, now I was thinking, uh, there's a, uh, you know, we, I don't know if you recall, but there was a gentleman that used to. Always uh, press the console to get uh, that, what was it called, those like uh, some kind of a light rail? But it's not light rail, they're pod, they're pods, but I know they would have uh, Skytran is a new uh, innovation. I don't know, just thinking, just thinking out of the box, and it doesn't mean it's gonna happen, but you know, um, that might be a, you know. Futuristic type of uh, mode of transportation, so just thinking out of the box. But I, I think maybe a co- a convention center would be a, a really good place, since this is gonna be the new, the new downtown, if you will. But great job, this is, this is exciting. I, I probably won't be around to see the, the whole fruition when it's all done. But uh, you know, uh, you know, because that's, you know. Uh, you're only, we're only here for a short time on this earth, so, so I don't know if it will, I'll be here to see the, all the, the final stages of it. But it's fantastic, you guys are doing a great job, thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Montano, the discussion uh, will go now. If any other uh, council member, I would like to request the microphone to add comment. Uh, this is just uh, another night with the Milpitas Metro, a specific plan. Uh, many more days and nights to come to work on this, uh, I believe uh, we'll see the final addition. Of this Milpitas Metro specific plan, uh, come the end of our fiscal year. So um, any deep digging or data requests, research, I encourage members to um, not do it on the spot here. Uh, or else we'll have, or, and we wanna make sure uh, we, we bring the uh, presented uh, data. Okay, great. Alright, I see no further request, uh, we're gonna go ahead and wrap up this item, we're just providing feedback. Um, I'll go to Jane one more time if there's any final comments, Jane, on your behalf.
Um, I would just like to um, echo your encouragement of everyone to um. Review the specific plan on milpetismetro.org, we really have um, uh, enjoyed. Hearing your comments and feedback, and we really thank you for this opportunity. It really will be a wonderful new part of Mil- Milpitas. I mean, it's growing into something quite special right now, so um, making uh, this specific plan address. Um, how this can be fully transformed, it, it will be a really exciting thing. So we really encourage all to participate and join us on October twenty fifth, or just join us online, milpetismetro.org. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much, Jane, I wanna really tap over to Ned Thomas, our planning director, Ned, any um, further thoughts?
Uh, just one quick anecdote if I may, last week I had a resident, newer resident to Milpitas in the metro area reach out to me. She lives in some of the new townhomes that are located on Tarab Court. And we were talking about different aspects of parks and things that were happening down there. And I said, well, let me, let me give you an overview of all the great things that are going to happen in your neighborhood over the next, I don't know, five, eight, eight years, we'll say. And I got started, about an hour later, I had this whole long list, and I did a little diagram for her and sent it over, and she was very happy to receive that. You know, to be in a, a new resident Mil- Milpitas, um, and to see all of the exciting things that are happening in that particular neighborhood. Which is just one of the key areas of this plan, and then you think about all the things we talked about tonight with the Innovation District. And the great impact, the positive impact that will have, not only on the neighborhood, but on the, you know, the fiscal, as we heard. The fiscal benefits to the city itself from that type of development. And then as we, I, one thing that we didn't mention tonight is we have been working very closely with the property owners. And uh, the major property owners in this area, namely Simon Properties, owner of the Great Mall and BTA for, for their sites. And coordinating very closely with them and finding alignment with the things that they would like to do on their properties. And, and uh, making sure that our plan, again as Jane said, so um, well, uh, we're really talking about. Uh, providing for the capacity to grow and develop. And, and it's really up to our private landowners and the developers to make that happen. And so we wanna work in very close partnership with them from uh, this time forward as, as we put the plan in, in place. But there's just uh, so many great things happening down there, it's a very exciting time to be in Milpitas, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ned Thomas, our planning, uh, planning director, okay, alright. Well, that wraps it up for this item tonight, those are our two items, great job uh, by all. Uh, city manager, all the way through um, to our uh, our staff members. Uh, City Council, thank you for being efficient tonight, we're getting out of here before eight PM. And uh, before I adjourn, I do wanna adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of a resident here, a friend of mine. Goes by the name of Rob Inkeys, um, he um, recently passed away. And um. You know, I'll keep his medical history private, but his family's still here in town, his two boys play uh, for the football team. Uh, over at the high school, and it's just a really tough time right now for a lot of families and that new Rob. And so tonight, uh, we're gonna adjourn this meeting in honor of my G, Rob Inkeys, this meeting's adjourned.